All right, I have six o'clock. We'll call a meeting to order. Um, currently we have everybody here but Ashley. She didn't email me earlier today. She said she was either gonna be late or absent today if she didn't make it the end time. So, uh, otherwise we have all the board members present. Uh, any additions to the agenda?
There are none.
I'll make a motion to have the agenda.
I'll second that. Got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Let's carry. Now we got the public comment. You have, anybody have public comment? Move on to the consent agenda. Matt?
Do you want me to, I'll take these. Um, so obviously the minutes from February 23rd and March 9th are included. We have bills and wire transfers for the month as well. Uh, we do have retirement notices from Kim Galbrenson, Don Knoll, Donnie Mayer, and Jane Rupruck. And then we also have a softball coaching contract for Zach Nelson. And Tara Sand has also agreed to be our assistant track and field coach. Um, so I'd like to thank those employees for their service as far as retirements are concerned, and it would be my recommendation that the board approve the consent agenda.
To look for a motion to approve the agenda?
How about Cheryl on the bills?
Oh, yeah, Cheryl.
Thank you. I did get a chance to review the bills and nothing jumped out. Everything was pretty much normal bills.
All right. Thank you.
Um, I had a question. Tara Sand was assistant softball, right?
Uh, assistant track.
Track, okay.
Um, so the, the track arrangement this spring is we have co-head coaches for track. Um, and so then rather than having both of those two coaches were assistant coaches last spring, so now rather than having, uh, two assistants, we would go with the co-head coaches and then have one assistant. Uh, it's the same number of track and field coaches. It's just the arrangement is a little bit different.
Okay, I guess I've misread it. I'm sorry. Uh, do we have anyone in line for assistant softball, or is someone already in place?
Um, I believe the, the only softball position that was open was the head softball. Um, the other, uh, assistant and, and JB, um, softball stuff is all staying the same as it was last year.
Okay, thank you.
Already been approved.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
A second from Maggie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Let's carry. Communication items. Matt, we'll go back to you.
All right, so we have a couple of things going on here. I'm gonna defer my time. Uh, the first one is, um, Tammy, I'm forgetting Tammy's last name off the top of my head. Oh, you know what? It's Tammy isn't the one who is here. We have representatives, uh, here to award, uh, a group of people, uh, the certificate from the governor's recognition as far as the recycling use of, uh, recycled tires. Actually, if, if you guys are willing, is for the camera and stuff, would you mind, um, just taking a, a space next to Thomas at the open table at the end, and then we can have it, um, on the camera as well?
He's gonna step in front of the cameras. Does that work as well?
If we wanna see his backside.
If you guys go right next, right there.
There we go.
You show up, the camera's right up here, so you'll get, get on there and the public sees what's going on.
There you go. And then I believe Miranda has the PowerPoint available as well.
Yes.
Well, thank you. This is exciting for us to be able to be part of this, uh, award ceremony and appreciate the work that the school district here in Painesville did in using this material creatively. Next slide, please. A, a little bit of background. Um, we, I, I am the CEO and president of First State Tire Recycling. Uh, we've been recycling about 2 million tires a year in Minnesota for the last 30 years. Uh, we, uh, have patented uses for the material for, uh, road construction and different types of applications to make the best and highest uses out of these, uh, old tires. About 30% of the tires we retrieve, about 2 million tires, get turned around and reused as tires. We have upgrading and sorting and remarketing into third world, uh, marketplaces for those tires. That, uh, 65% of the tires that no longer have life as a tire, as intended purpose, we made into a lightweight aggregate. And then, um, uses initially was for, uh, road, uh, subgrades, rust prevention. Uh, now we're getting into more, uh, stormwater installations, and that's the type of installation that you're, you're using it now. Uh, as we go through this presentation, there's a few other, um, uses that we'll be talking about. I'm really excited to have, uh, partners like Santik and, uh, Voss Plumbing, uh, making these type of projects happen. We've done over 400 projects in, in Minnesota alone, using these type of, uh, materials to solve an engineering problem. Uh, next slide, please. So we're talking about taking our discarded tires. We throw away one tire per person per year. We have 5 million tires in Minnesota a year. Uh, again, we do about 2 million tires. We, uh, over the years, we made it, uh, worked with the industry to make an ASTM specification. So there's a ASTM 6270B class material that we produce so that every engineer knows what the engineering properties are, knows the size of material coming into the job site. Uh, next slide, please. And so when we get into a project like we're doing here, one of the, uh, benefits of the tire drive aggregate is rock and these type of, it's, uh, uh, water storage installations has about a 30% void space. Tire drive aggregate has a 5-0, 50% void space. So it's more effective for storing more water underground i- in this, in a confined space. Uh, that's one of the engineering benefits of the material. Next slide, please. Um, as, as they end up using this material, it's more porous and it allows water to flow through it, but there's also a carbon-based material. The tires are in the steel-based material. So the carbon and the steel end up growing a biofilm which cleans the water. That biofilm grows twice as good on the tire drive aggregate as it does on any other kind of stone because of the carbon base and the regular shape of it. So it's actually cleaning the water as it goes through it. Well, we have, um, a lot of, uh, university reports showing how it roasts phosphorus, nitrates, pesticides, and now we're getting into some other chemicals, uh, PFOS, microplastics, nanoplastics, and, um, and, and right now the, the most recent one is the 6PPD and 6PPD quinone that, uh, come from tire wear. We're able to capture it in the tire drive aggregate also. Next slide, please. And so here are these kind of projects where we're able to meet our federal stormwater requirements. Each municipality, whenever they do any kind of construction, they have to make sure the hard surfacing, the water stays on their site. A tire drive aggregate is very efficient for doing that. Uh, next slide, please. And so, and here, you know, basically, uh, we've learned over the years how to compress and compact this material, receive the void space, uh, uh, meet the stormwater requirements, detain, retain the water so that we're not shipping, uh, water downstream when it's still warm and cooling it back off. Plus now we're cleaning the material. Next slide, please. And so here's a, a kind of an animation part where we have our, our cars, uh, on our roadways, at our parking lots. They have tire wear. You know, obviously a tire is brand new. It's got 13 and 30 seconds, but it ends up, uh, wearing, uh, particles come off our tires and dust particles. That dust particles, when affected by the, uh, sun and ultraviolet light, ozone, it changes that, uh, dust particle into a 6PPD quinone. That 6PPD quinone, uh, when it has a water flush, ends up getting into our creeks and streams, and there's been some reports showing how that chemical is toxic to fish. Well, with our material and like your design you have in your parking lot, that dust is collected through the, uh, when a rain event happens into the void space in the tire drive aggregate and doesn't allow it to migrate into the, uh, into any kind of water and, and the, actually the chemically binding up the, the quinone in the rubber components of the carbon in the tires and obviously saving our environment. So this is some of the new science that we're doing. Uh, we're working with the, uh, US Tire Manufacturers Association to try be able to use this material on a nationwide basis to address these kind of environmental problems. Uh, it's definitely cutting-edge, uh, information, cutting-edge stuff from the university showing how this is chemically working. Next slide, please. And so, um, you know, we're very excited that our, our governor, uh, Mr. Walls is, is recognizing the work that the, uh, the school district here in Painesville did in, in using this innovative new material, working with Santik and, and Voss Plumbing for the installation, and, and he's, you know, his office is excited to be able to acknowledge and, and have this award available for you folks today. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we get, can we get a photo? Is that okay? Can we use that, our back wall and just get a photo?
Do you want?
Is it all of us?
Do you want just you, or?
Well, I want the whole board. Everyone, folks.
We're one board.
So over the last, uh, two years, we handed out over a thousand certificates to engineering firms, uh, teaching them how and why to use this material. So this is part of the teaching campaign, so.
How about, can you switch places with Steven? We'll get the certificate side by side there. Thank you. Is it okay to get a little closer with the masks on?
We're supposed to smile, right?
Stay there, please. One more time. Thank you.
I'll make one more shot. Two, one, two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, the compaction you mentioned, how do you get it compacted so that there's not, like, how do you get it compacted?
Basically, rubber has a rebound component to it. And it's just like stepping on a rubber ball. You need to have so much weight on top of the rubber balls and soft ballsy. It turns out to be 18 inches of soil gets rid of all the rebound in the rubber. And so when the design here, they had a minimum of 18 inches of ground or soil to get rid of the reballs in the rubber itself.
Well, I had a question too. Does, does it ever fill up with soot or other components that it has to be redone?
Very good question. Yeah, there's a 50% void space. So like any type of stormwater infiltration gallery, typically there's some form of pre-treatment of catching the sediment, the cigarette bus, the bus type thing. So usually they have skunks or isolator rolls and stuff involved in catching that sediment and catching those things so it doesn't get blocked. And, and so it's the same design procedure they would do on any kind of underground infiltration gallery. It just has better void space than what is typically put in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Matt, do you have anything to think on that?
Uh, next up, I, I do believe I see Frida Jansen, and is, is Karen Johnson with her too? I think so. So why don't we bring Frida and Karen, or is it Karen? Frida's pointing to Karen like it's her job. Karen, up. I think they have a donation, um, from the FFA alumni group. So go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Um, yes, as Matt said, I'm Karen Johnson. I'm the Painesville Alumni Vice President, and with me is Frida Jansen. She is the current president of the alumni. Uh, we are here today to, uh, share with you some checks, as we do annually, to compensate the school for the electricity and the water, uh, used by our group in relation to the plot here on the, um, on the south end of the school here. Um, we, um, appreciate the ability to use that piece of land. It is about just shy of 10 acres that we're able to, on an annual basis, or have been able to use to plant, um, either corn or soybeans or a combination of both, um, to use really twofold. It's a, uh, it's our one and only fundraiser for our alumni group. We sell the crop off of that, um, piece of land as well as, uh, we take entry fees, uh, from each of the seed corn dealers that participate in the, the plot study, really, their ability to take the yield data off of some of the, the varieties that they're kind of bringing through, um, testing to determine how those yields are gonna, um, how those varieties are gonna yield over time is valuable to them. So they pay an entry fee, and then we also sell the crop off of that piece of ground. Um, and then the other flip side of that is it's an educational opportunity for us to educate kids from the school, kids from the local FFA chapter, to help them understand about how crops grow, um, some new technology related to, um, growing row crops. Um, maybe it's harvesting, maybe it's chemical, maybe it's genetics. Um, we've touched on different things throughout the year to kind of highlight just really what crop science is, is doing today. Um, and then also invite kids from the class out to, to look at that. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we weren't able to do our plot day, which happens in the fall, but, um, we'll be back bigger and better this fall, I'm sure. Um, but again, we appreciate the ability to use that and, um, moving forward, continue to have that, that opportunity for a hands-on experience for these kids. Um, you might have noticed last year it was all planted into corn. Uh, a bit of the study we, we, we experimented with is, you might remember it was a corn-soybean split through the, in the past. We took the opportunity to do a corn-on-corn rotation on half of it, and it would be a corn-on-bean on the other half, and we split the varieties that were entered as rows in both of those environments. So we were able to give back to the seed dealers kind of our interpretation of, you know, some of these varieties do well in corn-on-corn, some of them don't do so well. So in going into that, they were able to kind of glean some information related to that rotation practice on those varieties that we were testing. So that was kind of our value add there, and that's why, as you noticed, it was all corn. Um, we delivered that corn to FEEDCO here in town. Um, so they were, we're lucky enough to not have to haul it too far. They were able to take all of it, and a lot of that grain goes into animal use here in, in the area. So again, a win-win for our people and the farmers in the area that, that feed back that grain and don't grow enough for themselves, can buy it from FEEDCO. So that was a win. We are going back to a corn bean rotation again this year is our plan. Um, that's, that's what it looks like, and we might plant some sweet corn on one end of the field if we can find some Rhonda Bredie sweet corn that can be sprayed with chemical for weed control and pest control along with the rest of it. So we're kind of working on trying to get up that, off the ground so that these students have something else applicable. You know, maybe pick sweet corn, sell sweet corn. The ideas are still kind of being formulated. So just wanted to give you guys a little idea of what we're working on, how much we appreciate using that plot, kind of the value we get from it. Um, so you guys understand, um, how much it means to us to be able to use that. So, any questions?
I think it's great. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's, it's a unique opportunity. And hopefully, you know, we've talked about things about vegetables and, and, you know, the irrigation system probably needs to have something done with it. It's kind of passed its prime, um, passed its useful life. So more to come. We still need to kind of get our ducks in a row before we come back and, and maybe share some of those more solid plans with you or what we're thinking about. But, um, it is an evolution, and we need to continue to be something that these kids can learn from and gain some value from career-wise, um, like life-wise, you know, where their food comes from, and then at the same time, you know, offer us some fundraiser support, um, funds we can use to help, you know, fund the, the local chapter to go to certain events, pay their transportation, their hotel entry fees, that sort of stuff. So we can support, support those kids, both academically and financially.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Really feel good to be here. Thank you.
And then, uh, that Chuck can just end up with Miranda, and then we will get that on the agenda for the next business meeting, and you will accept that donation formally, um, at the next business meeting. Uh, the only other thing I have is just obviously, uh, plans for the next school year. Budgeting is, is, uh, going on, and, uh, we just finished up high school registration, uh, last week. Um, I believe all of the, the students that were absent or not in school during registration are now in the system, and so we will be moving ahead with the next steps of, uh, of budgeting. Um, and then we are getting very close now to the start of fourth quarter. I believe it's April 7th is the, uh, the first day of, of fourth quarter, and it's good to have all students back in and, and, uh, doing well. Um, the other thing I know that people are asking questions about is, are we gonna have commencement? Is there gonna be a prom? Um, all of those things, yes, we are working on those, and right now I can share that there will be a commencement. Uh, exactly what it is and what it all looks like is in the works, and, and we will know more as the, the days and weeks get closer to commencement. Um, and likewise, there's a group that's working on prom and, and a post-prom, and so both of those things are, are in the works, and, and we are, um, planning and, and implementing those as best we can with, with current protocol. Any questions for me? Then I would move to the committee reports. Anything from anyone regarding committees?
We had a West Central Ed meeting.
Correct.
They highlighted, um, the school psychologist program, and it's recommended to have one school psychologist for every 500 students. We're a little bit below that recommendation, uh, but each district does have one. Um, the other kind of big thing that was discussed is they're thinking by the end of, and that was the week of the 8th, so I don't know what the numbers are in, but they were gonna be at 48 students for the ALC, and that was, seems like it's their biggest cohort yet. And so that's something that they had talked about. And let's see. Some of the students are struggling to be on track for graduation. It, the numbers are very different from last year. Um, just, I think a lot of it is due to, I would say COVID. Would that be a fair statement, Matt?
I think that's very accurate, Maggie. Yeah, I think there's been some challenges with the distance learning, uh, even some of the hybrid, uh, circumstances when students aren't, uh, in contact with teachers and seeing them face-to-face in person. I think that's, that's raised challenges for the ALC.
Right, except for that particular group. Um, but they're, they're working on it. Um, the other thing is Barb is retiring, which is, she's done a great job, so I just wanted to note that. Um, she is, I, I don't know what the timeline is for a new search, but, uh, she was very, very value-add for the West Central Ed. She did a great job. So I was sad to see that retirement come across. Um, but other than that, I don't, anything else, Matt, from?
Well, I think that pretty much sums it up. Any other committee reports?
We had our district technology meeting, uh, a week and a half ago or so. Um, nothing really major going on other than, uh, just final, projecting final costs on, on replacement of computers, updating the, um, the computers for the staff as well as the, um, figuring out final costs on, uh, the Chromebooks and stuff for the students. And then there was just some conversation of having the seniors have the opportunity to, to potentially buy back their, uh, their devices. So they're looking in the, looking in the, the cost difference of if we're gonna have the opportunity to sell it back to a company as a recycling end of things, what that cost would be, and is there value between that and a, and a student potentially purchasing their laptop on the way out of, uh, a way out, way out of Painesville. If they don't have a device, if the family needs an extra device in the school, it might be an opportunity for them to get into a, a, a computer at a lower cost. But, so it's something, they're all just kind of still testing the water on, on some of those things, but, um, that was the, the bulk of the technology meeting. Any other meetings? If not, uh, do we have nothing for old business? We've gone to new business?
So the first item on here is shared services. Um, there's a summary of shared services that I would like the district to move forward with. Um, these are not necessarily finalized, but I think these are the shared services right now that we're in the position to be able to move ahead with. Um, so I would, uh, like the board to, um, give me the, the okay to, to go ahead and, and move forward with this. Real quick summary on these. Um, we would be moving forward with, uh, selling one day of our network administrator contract to BBE. So we would have our network administrator at Painesville four days a week. They would be at BBE one day a week. We would continue with the current business manager, uh, arrangement that we have had, um, this year and, um, and the previous year. That, that shared business management contract, uh, would, would continue moving forward. The other thing that both districts, I believe, have interest in doing is actually expanding upon that business manager role and move to the next step on the business office side of things, and that would include having payroll services to be, uh, um, completed in one, uh, office, uh, space rather than having both districts continuing to have payroll services. Uh, it's a really good situation to do that, just because, uh, all of our systems now are in alignment, and so, uh, it really is work that is, um, web-based, and it is something that it doesn't require physical space in a district in order to, to complete. So I think now's the time to, to move forward with that. Tendatively, um, what I've talked with the superintendent at BBE about is using the upcoming school year as the time to get the framework and foundation in place for that, and then we would start with doing some shared payroll services in the spring of next school year with the idea to fully implement it the following school year. And then the last one is district assessment coordinator. Uh, currently, this is a need that, that BBE has. It's a, it's a situation where Painesville has some flexibility with our district assessment coordinator, and there's some interest in that district assessment coordinator taking on additional role or an additional district. So I would like to be able to proceed and, and move forward with, um, potentially having one district assessment coordinator between the two districts. And really what that district assessment coordinator is, that's really our liaison, um, for the district to, um, um, the state as far as all state testing is concerned. When it would be time for us to do the Minnesota Student Survey, the district assessment coordinator would be the one that does that. That assessment's only once every, uh, three years, and then if we were ever, uh, if either district was ever identified as a NAEP, um, participant, and that's, uh, National, uh, Academic Progress, Academic and Educational Progress, I believe is what NAEP stands for. Um, but again, that's, it's a, it's kind of like a lottery system. It's a random sampling of school districts across the country that participate. Um, so if, if either one of us were ever involved in that, the district assessment coordinator would work on that. Questions on any of those shared services?
If not, we'll look to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Maggie with the motion to approve both shared services at BBE schools for 2021, 22-year. Rick with the second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Carry. Uh, custodial structure, 21, 22, action.
All right, so I, uh, included a draft of, of, um, where I see things kind of moving forward as far as, um, uh, restructuring custodians. Um, a couple of things, I just want to highlight kind of what the differences are here. Um, obviously, the board just recently, and a few minutes ago, approved the retirement from Donnie Mayer, our current buildings and ground supervisor. Um, my recommendation moving forward would be that that position, uh, is a .5 FTE rather than a 1.0 FTE. Um, the other piece that I think we need to plan for is to be, with the addition, um, going on to the secondary space. I know during the conversations with community and, um, even the planning sessions prior to having that, that new addition finalized, some of the meetings that I attended, the question frequently came up, um, what is gonna be the additional personnel cost associated with doing some form of an addition? At that time, I think the, the response that I recall the district giving was we thought it would be about a .5 FTE in custodial is, is what we were probably looking at. Um, and so this re- reorganization, it does, uh, achieve that. Um, you can see when it, right now, we're at nine and a half FTEs. The proposed structure would have us going, um, to 10 FTEs, but the reality of the 10 FTEs is we would actually gain a 1.0 FTE custodian out of the deal. So we would shrink that administrative role down to a halftime role. We would add an additional halftime. So what we would really be adding, or what we'd really be getting at the end of this is, um, a, a full-time FTE in the custodial area. Obviously, it's, uh, we are doing some addition here, so there is a little bit, uh, additional cost. Um, now, this is all an estimate because the, if this gets approved, if the board is okay with this structure, the next step then becomes, how do we go about with the, um, job descriptions, and we have to go down the route then of posting those positions and, and doing all of that. Um, but it would end up ultimately adding a 1.0 FTE in custodian, and the way we're doing that is it's a .5 total FTE increase, and then it's also a .5 decrease in our buildings and ground supervisor position. Um, I did put a comparison. You know, some people will look at square feet per FTE as kind of a benchmark. I'll be honest with you, board members, I don't know how our numbers fit with that. You know, when you look at pre-project, and we were at 31,579 square feet per FTE, and then you look at square feet per FTE, and then you look at post-project and we're at thirty-three thousand eight hundred, I actually can't really give you a, a gauge or a lens as to how does that compare or how does that, that fit. Um, but that's, I guess, kind of a snapshot. If you wanted to try and come up with a comparison, what does this look like in light of adding space to our facility? Questions at all on the custodial piece?
I have a couple of questions. So by, by moving the director position down to point-five, is part of that, a lot of that role was scheduling? And that's able to now go to the head custodians? Or how are we able to compensate for some of that workers that being moved or shifted? Um, that was my first question.
Yeah, so I, the, they knew that point-five FTE Buildings and Grounds Director, that uh, position would not be a position where somebody is um, you know, riding the floor scrubber or pushing broom or they wouldn't actually be part of the cleaning and every day, the day-to-day logistical process of getting the buildings ready for the next day of service. Um, so that's a, a piece of this is we truly would just have a Buildings and Grounds Director. It would be a point-five position. And they would really be focusing on the overall overseeing the Buildings and Grounds Department and managing the personnel. And then they would also be responsible for working with vendors and contracts and everything that goes along with getting all of our scope of summer work and all the outside contractors that come in throughout the summer to help um, address whatever area of the building we're working on in order to get ready for the new school year. They would be very much dealing with the um, direct supervision and taking care of that role. Um, and then obviously, they would be very tied to our long-term facility maintenance plan. And all of those projects that are on there, they would be the ones that would be seeking out bids, quotes, all of those things to be able to get those projects um, from concept into actually getting them uh, delivered in our building.
And then my other question is, with that being point-five, within the job market, is that going to be a, a challenge or is that person? Like, I have no idea. I mean, I know we struggle getting custodians. Um, do we foresee and that we, we, it's, we can flow off if that's going to be a challenge to find out part-time or?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I mean, I think the other piece is, is part of someone's assignment, point-five that and something else. I mean, are, are there other combinations or something? Um, but I, I think when we're just evaluating this from a custodial perspective, I think realistically what we need is about that point-five FTE.
So are we still thinking in long-term of possibly a shared position? Where that could be halftime here and halftime in another school district?
At the current time, Rick, we're not talking about sharing that position. Uh, there's been numerous concerns on both uh, districts. I know that was one of the positions we talked about specifically sharing with BBE. And there have been a number of, of concerns that the BBE administrative team has had about having that be a shared position. And there are also some concerns that the Painesville administrative team had about that. And so I think at this point, both districts have kind of just come to the conclusion that at this point, we probably are not going to be sharing that position. That's not to say that at a point down the road, that that couldn't be revisited and, and maybe things uh, change or, or look differently. But right now, I think that has kind of been tabled.
I'm the head custodians for the elementary and the, the secondary school. Are those going to be like um, overseeing direct people that are working in there, like the maintenance and the custodians? And is this going to be a working position? Not just another, um, a management position where they're not actually doing it? The reason I ask that is commonly you can take somebody overseeing something. If they are directly involved in working all the same things, they just do a ton better at than somebody that just don't oversee it.
Yep, so both head positions would be part of the day-to-day operations of the building. Um, so they would be involved, both head custodians would have a certain uh, routine that would uh, focus on cleaning and turning the building around for the next day. Um, they certainly would have a piece of their routine would be uh, maintenance and, and projects. They would play a, a critical role when we're talking about specific facility projects at each building. The head custodian would play a critical role in having those. Um, whatever portions of those are required for Painesville personnel to complete in order for, for a vendor to come in, they would play a key role in, in those. Um, but no, those head custodians, they would be in the buildings and they would be involved in the day-to-day operations in those, those buildings.
So it's a head custodial maintenance, really, is what I hear you saying?
Correct, yeah. And they're, and they're gonna, but, but they're also going to be very involved in the scheduling of the, the evening routines. They're going to be very involved in the scheduling of the day routines. Um, but one of the things that I think our administrative team universally agrees on is we need to have day coverage, full-time day coverage at our elementary school. And right now, that's not necessarily the case all the time. And so I think that that's uh, another need as we look at restructuring. We need to make sure that that building has full-time coverage um, during the, the days.
I think it's a good shot at restructuring and to be more um, to be better at what we're doing. Um, I, I'm in total agreement with the, making the change.
I agree with even the one comment there, Bruce. It's a good shot at it. I, I like overall structure of this. Um, but knowing that this is not something that we have to tie ourselves down to for the next five years. You know, it's something that I think we can really uh, make some, make some ground with this year and see how the new facility plays out within the time uh, restraints of, of our current staff or the, the new structured staff and see how that, that plays, plays into the whole picture as well. I, I do have a little concern that, that, that kind of stretches them a little bit um, on adding the new square footage of new facility. Luckily, that new facility is one, two of them, which doesn't necessarily take up all the same amount of time that, that many classrooms would be for the same square footage. But um, uh, I, I think uh, I think it's, it's a good, good picture right now for what we can, what we can move forward with.
And just to add on to that, Thomas, I think one of the things that all the board members need to understand too is um, there's a really good likelihood that we're going to need to move beyond looking at our Buildings and Grounds Personnel as Monday through Friday employees. Um, we are most likely going to be looking to employ somebody who's going to have Saturday and Sunday regularly scheduled. Um, that may cost us a little bit more in employment cost because it's going to be tricky to find somebody who's going to be willing to work Saturdays and Sundays. There's a lot of companies out there that are incentivizing Saturday and Sunday hours or they're incentivizing second shift hours, that type of stuff. So just know that that's the other thing that right now, the administrative team and community ed particularly is really working with is, once that facility is up and running, what do we want custodial coverage to look like in that space? And that is, is going to include, and it's going to need to include Saturday and Sunday coverage. And so we're going to develop this in a way that we can be flexible and have that built into the expectations um, rather than, you know, getting, getting things open and all of a sudden then employees have heartburn because now they have to work Saturdays or now they have to work Sunday afternoons or something like that.
That's a good plan.
I have one more question. How does the current um, custodial maintenance staff feel about this recommended? Are they, I, I would guess they would appreciate having two head custodians at each?
Yes, so, so I met with all of our custodial people um, last week. And, and we talked about this, we talked about what they, what in their mind, kind of what's working well? What, what are some things we could focus on to make things work better? Um, we talked about this structure. I can tell you that I think um, all of our custodians see a need to have a head in each building. I think that that, that having that go-to person is something that everybody is um, interested in. I think the other thing that universally everyone was in agreement about is making sure that we have that full day coverage at the elementary school as well. They see that and they understand why that needs to be a priority. Obviously, they're concerned when, when I was talking about the new facility and, and potentially needing to find somebody who's going to be assigned to weekends and stuff. Um, you know, they brought up really quickly, well, is that realistic? Are we going to find that person? Is that person out there looking for something like that? So I know it's going to be a challenge. Um, but I think we need to start with what we want our ideal structure to be. And then let's go out and find it. And who knows, maybe a month from now, people are going to say, see, I, I told you, you couldn't find that. And they might be right. Um, but we're not going to know that unless we go with what we want our ideal structure to be. And if we can't find that, then we can come back and, and circle the wagons and go to Plan B or Plan C. So yeah, they, I think they're, they're, for the most part, they, they were in agreement. I, there weren't a lot of things on there that they were in, in disagreement or said, were shaking their head saying, come on, Matt, why are you even, what's the point of this? I, I didn't get that impression from them.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion directing the administration to move forward with the proposed custodial structure.
I have a motion from Bruce. And I'll second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Carry. Twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Um, so I just wanted to share with the board, there's uh, obviously been some questions about with budget reductions. Um, I'm not sure where the message is getting out that um, there are probationary teachers that are going to get laid off. Um, that is, is not the circumstance. Um, that actually has been shared with all probationary teachers that um, anyone who potentially would be getting laid off would have a direct conversation with the building principal or myself. Um, so I, I just want the board to know that that's not the circumstances. Obviously, this evening, there were several retirements um, on the, the agenda. Right now, the plan is to not rehire those positions. And so we are going to have some um, movement and some, some reassignments. But as far as having people um, become laid off or be on unrequested leave that are in probationary status, that's not um, the direction the district is going. I did share as part of the agenda, um, the class sections that we are, the administrative team is using as far as uh, the data that we have. I think it's important for the board members to know. I think it's important for community members to know that um, the number of students that we're talking about in those grades for twenty-one, twenty-two in that far-right column, that's what we know today. Obviously, the seventy-five students with the asterisks for um, kindergarten, that is the number of students and families that are going to be invited to kindergarten roundup. That number, I hope, is right around seventy. And if it stays around seventy as far as the commits that are planning on sending children to kindergarten for next year, we will need four sections of kindergarten. If all of a sudden we're inviting seventy-five uh, families and students in for kindergarten roundup and we only have, you know, fifty-six commitments that say, yes, we're going to send our child to kindergarten, then obviously, we might not be looking at having four sections of kindergarten. So there's still some fluidity to this. Uh, but right now, I do see those sections that are um, attached to the agenda. That is probably where things are going to fall if our numbers stay where they're at today. Now, the other thing that can happen is between June thirtieth, when this board is responsible for approving a budget and the first day of school, we could see increased enrollment at one grade level or multiple grade levels. And that increased enrollment may cause the district to need to have to open another um, section of a grade level. So while these are what we are working with as far as when we're developing our budget, just know that there is some level of flexibility and fluidity that still needs to be considered as people are evaluating um, this information. Questions on, on those section numbers? Um, that's really, that's the only thing, I know the, the topic is budget. But I just want to make sure that people understand. Um, obviously, in order to develop a budget and bring a budget to the board, the biggest piece of information that we need to have is exactly how many personnel are going to be included in that budget. So this gives the board a really good idea of what it is that we are looking at as far as faculty members across the district when we're, we're looking at um, personnel in the new budget. Questions on, on any of that?
Do these student numbers include the distance learners?
Yes, they do. What they don't include is right now, they don't include any students that potentially went to a connections academy or chose uh, homeschooling for the year. Um, but they do include any kids that stayed with or enrolled at Painesville area schools but are selecting to learn remotely right now.
And the numbers, when you look at like the total student population by total number of um, like classrooms, it's still pretty much the same ratio per classroom. You know, when you look at, if you were to look at the overall and, which is nice to see even with those retirements, we're not really losing overall our, you know, teacher to student ratio.
Yeah, there's very little impact on it. Um, and, and again, these numbers are preliminary though. And so if we end up, you know, getting, picking up another, you know, ten first graders, then obviously, we're going to need to, to reevaluate that. Um, but, but yeah, there, I, I don't see a, a large movement from um, from this year to next year.
So is the re-evaluation threshold twenty-five like for elementary? Or, or is it, is it still fluid depending on the class? Because each, each grade is different. But is there a point where, you know, you kind of have that threshold of where you would need to look at? And again, I know elementary is different than even middle and high school.
Yeah, and I, I guess that would be part of my answer, Maggie, is I don't see really any increase in enrollment um, at the secondary building that's going to move us away from being three sections at every grade level. Um, uh, as far as I'm concerned, we, if we get class sizes of ninety across the board through grade six through twelve, that will probably still be three sections in every one of those grades. To me, where you can have the biggest fluidity and the biggest movement is K-one-two. That is to me where the, the, the flexibility is, is really needed. Um, even once you get into grades three, four, and five, um, you know, I, I think those are, are sections that when you look at what we're proposing of class sizes of twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, twenty-five, those are very common numbers for grades three, four, and five. And um, I, I don't see those necessarily moving a lot. K-one-two certainly could, could still have some, some movement to it. And, and that would be where it would be mostly, most volatile.
Uh, any other discussion on this? Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three school calendars?
So I just wanted to get this in front of the board just because usually March is when the board is, is um, approving a calendar and we don't have a calendar ready yet, so we're not asking you to approve anything. Um, if you think back to, was it our January meeting or just, it was our December fifteenth meeting when we had students in? Uh, one of the universal things that we heard from middle school and secondary school students was the um, what they liked about the flexibility of Fridays and being able to personalize what their needs are in order to work with, with uh, teachers. Now, I just want to be clear, I don't want anyone to misunderstand me. I'm not proposing that we move ahead with a four-day school week. That is not what the message is. Too age, right? You thought you could compare what he wanted. Um, but what I am, what I am wanting the board to know is we are going to be coming back with a calendar that is going to try to leverage, how can we personalize time for students to be able to work with faculty members either individually or in small groups? We still need some more time to work on it. Uh, both of the buildings have been meeting about the calendar. Both leadership teams have been working on that. The other thing I just want the board to know is we might also be exploring or looking at having our elementary building having a different calendar than our secondary building. our elementary building having a different calendar than our secondary building. I think that's a conversation we need to have. I do think we need to keep families and, and how families use services at the forefront of our decision. But at the same time, I think we also have to acknowledge that there are different needs when you're talking about elementary students compared to secondary students. So what I'm sharing with you is if we just rolled over our current calendar, this is not what is being proposed right now, but just know that this is what the school calendar would look like if we just rolled everything forward a year. Um, and then in April, we will have a proposed calendar back to, uh, the board and we can talk more about exactly the nuances of that calendar. Questions at all on calendar?
All right, uh, operating referendum.
All right, again, and this is just informational, uh, for the board again. Um, you know, it's, uh, I guess I thought it would be good just to summarize what it is that actually is out there when you take. And essentially, Painesville area schools has three different referendums right now that are voter approved. We have an operating referendum. That operating referendum, referendum started out at seven hundred and twenty-three dollars per pupil. Things were recalculated when they weighted students differently. And so in order to make it tax neutral and revenue neutral, um, the per pupil got adjusted to seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents per pupil. Then over time, they started adding in the local optional revenue. And so now they've actually taken off the first seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil, and that's considered local optional revenue, so that doesn't even show up now as, um, an operating referendum. So right now, in Painesville area schools, our operator, voter approved operating referendum is thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. The next one is our capital projects levy, so a lot of people just refer to this, uh, locally as our tech levy. Uh, this operates or it's calculated a little bit different, um, because we're using net tax capacity of a property versus referendum market value. And it's, it's always, um, taxed at a flat, um, rate. So when, when this was first approved, it was approved to generate two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And the way that, um, that, uh, referendum generated that two hundred and forty thousand dollars was by using a three point two five five percent tax rate on net tax capacity. Um, so today, that tech levy, uh, brings in about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, as our net tax capacity, as properties have gained in tax, uh, estimated market value or market value, they, uh, that net tax capacity goes up, uh, correspondingly. And then the last one would be our bond referendum. Um, obviously in August of twenty nineteen, our community supported, uh, the, the most recent bond project. And so you can see kind of where our bond referendums have, have been, um, over the course of the years. The, the interesting thing, um, is, is I have, is you kind of take a historical perspective. Um, it, those, those tax rates haven't really fluctuated a lot. The, the bigger piece is obviously as, um, parcels of property in our district are evaluated and have a higher, um, worth, then you are paying more in taxes as that tax rate has stayed relatively consistent. It has gone up a, a few hundreds of a percent here and there, but for the most part, it has stayed, um, relatively consistent. So the question I think the board is, is going to need to start, um, working with is what, how do we want to approach, um, another operating levy? Uh, we are okay with our current operating levy through calendar year, or excuse me, through November of twenty twenty-two. So the real question that this body is ultimately going to need to make over the next, um, couple of months is do we want to go and run an operating referendum, um, in November of twenty-one? Or do we want to wait and run that operating referendum in November of twenty-two? The pros and cons, obviously, November of twenty-one is coming up. We're sitting in really good timeline right now. I mean, we're having this conversation in March. Realistically, um, this group needs to make a decision probably in May. If, if that's something that the board and, and district wants to do. Um, the good news is, is if there's a proposal that is brought to the community, if it doesn't pass, our existing operating referendum stays intact. And, uh, we would have that to be able to, um, go back and come up with a different proposal for November of twenty twenty-two. The flip side to it is, is some people just say, well, if you already have existing authority, just keep your existing authority in place until it's time to take care of it. And that would mean that we shouldn't be going out and, and asking voters this fall. We should wait until November of twenty twenty-two. There are districts that do it both ways. It, I don't think there's one right way or, or a, a wrong way. Um, I personally would probably lean towards asking in November of twenty twenty-one is, is where I would probably lean. Um, but that's just me probably being, um, overly cautious and, and maybe a little more conservative. But, um, so that's, I think, one question. Board members have any questions or, or discussion regarding that?
Yeah, so if we go to twenty twenty-one, we get to, I look at September of twenty twenty-one being a real day that we're gonna, or a real time, we're gonna find out where we're at. We're gonna find out potentially if everything goes well, how many kids we're going to have in the school. Um, obviously, um, when we look at the impact per student, um, dollars wise. So if we decide to do an operating levy for twenty twenty-one, what is the last dates that we can actually decide? Or is this a decision that we have to make before September? Cause like that's a tough, that's a, we, we, none of us have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
And that's a huge difference.
It's a good question. So the real absolute deadline that the board would have to follow would be seventy-four days prior to the general election day in November. So that's going to put you back into August is where seventy-four days is going to put you. I don't know the exact date, um, but it is late August is when the board would actually have to do the resolution adopting a formal question on the ballot for the November election day.
Do you think based off of our legislation, is that right now, again, we, we can't predict the future? But I feel like there's been more talk about putting less onus on districts. So is that something too like that we would consider that potentially the state would be helping out more? I mean, again, that's hard to know, but is that something even considered? Or do you just kind of go, that's so unpredictable in what they're going to decide?
Take you back on that question, if we pass an operating referendum and the state does kick in more, then how does that play out?
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, I, I guess, and I kind of look at what is going on with the state and with, uh, stimulus packages and that, um, as, yes, there are things that are absolutely needed. But I think it's important to also remember, these are all one-time revenues. And so we're really trying to compare a conversation about one-time funding with an operating referendum, which is a commitment and a ten-year continual funding source. So I really struggle with having the apples and apples conversation about, well, how do these potential COVID funds and stimulus funds impact our operating referendum? In my mind, I don't know that they do because there is not going to be any stimulus fund or there's going to be no COVID fund for year four of our operating referendum, or year five, or year six, or year seven, or year eight. And so I, I think we have to try as best we can to look at those as separate. But I do understand how that can create confusion and it can create that gray area and, and it can be a, a more difficult and nuanced conversation.
Yeah, and I was referring more to like changing how the funding is overall per pupil.
No, I, I don't, I don't.
That's going to change.
I don't see any, uh, right now, I'm not hearing of anybody at the Capitol wanting to actually use what we've been doing with, um, the pandemic and really overhauling how Minnesota funds schools.
Okay.
I'm not hearing that conversation at all. And Jake, maybe you are hearing other things from people at the legislature, but I hear none of that.
Whatever I hear is not going well, that's all I can say.
Well, cause they came out with that big proposal, they had the task force on to make education more equitable. And that is, and so that's where that was coming from is there was lots of recommendations like, is there by chance where they're going to even out so it doesn't become so burdensome on the level?
And I think, and I think Maggie, the other thing that is playing into this is that the, the stimulus dollars are also impacting that conversation. Because the reality is when you start talking about the work that that task force did, if you really want to get serious about implementing elements of those, those are commitments that people need to vote for and support and know that they're going to have a cost five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now. And I think right now, the whole stimulus conversation is really making it difficult to even get any forward traction about overhauling a funding system that quite honestly is, is outdated.
Right, and that's where it's like, I was kind of hoping maybe there'd be more traction. You would have a sense that that was going in a positive direction, but that's where I was thinking, if that, if we do foresee that changing, would you hold off another year? But if that doesn't even seem like it's a reality in the near future, then we wouldn't need to move forward.
Right.
And we need to move forward either way, bud.
So related to the seventy-four days that we have to have, so, um, I guess as I look at it, just, um, from the thirty thousand feet, which is one of your favorites. I think when we hit the, the end of September, I have a gut feeling we're going to have a pretty good idea where we're headed. Is it possible to delay a vote not at a normal election time? Until like the beginning of January? And then is there a ruling that we can't have two in one year? I mean, um, it would give us the time. If we look at all the flexibility that people have done everywhere with the COVID, the issue is, we're not going into this with a good student enrollment number. We're making a plan for ten years. Is that a possibility?
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I want to just review, um, cause I know that once you enter your last year of an operating referendum, there are some different components and there might be some additional flexibility out there. Um, so I want to get back to you, Bruce, on, on what does that look like potentially? Could we do something in say February of twenty-two rather than November of twenty-two? Because we would know what our September numbers are and all that stuff. Um, so I, I need to get back to you on that. I do know for a fact, the districts that have the most flexibility and can ask, um, many things, our districts are in statutory operating debt. And thankfully, Painesville is not in S O D, so we do not have those flexibilities automatically extended to us. But let me look into more what potentially twenty twenty-two flexibility is built into statute, um, for school districts. Obviously, anything that we would do outside of the November twenty twenty-two statewide election day, if we are going to use our authority to be able to run an election on a different day, then we have to, uh, bear the cost of that election. So there is some added expense to the district. I don't think that that should be a, an automatic stop. Um, but I just want the board to know that there, there would be that element of it that potentially we'd be looking at some added expense, but it might be an option. I'll get back to you.
So yeah, my, my thought towards that, Bruce, is, you know, much like talking about stimulus money right now and how that, you know, it's just kind of one year deal. We could look at our enrollment for, for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year as a one-year thing. You know, and should that make a difference in what we decide to do over our ten-year plan? I, I guess I'm more leaning towards the fact I'd rather see us, you know, in a deeper conversation of a twenty twenty-one, November twenty twenty-one, uh, you know, ballot, uh, or something on a ballot for that versus waiting just to see what this, this enrollment will be for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then twenty-two, twenty-three school year is going to be whatever, it's going to be enrollment wise too. And we don't, we, we, I guess kind of waiting for that enrollment period doesn't really change the next ten years.
When we're looking at a matter of one month to get the analytical data, that may come from where we go with the students. We have to remember, we have educated the public for other methods of, of teaching that's available. They may not come back.
And next.
They don't come back, that's one budget, but that's as you said yourself. If a lot of those kids come back, that's kind of maybe a different.
They could come back this year than not the next year. You know, or they could not come back this year.
Fall into normal evolution of the school.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, uh, we, we've evolved in the last two years, you know, look at the last enrollment, the last two or three years. We just don't know, uh, uh, what's, you know, what's next year going to look like, the economy versus this year. I, I just don't know that we have, even looking at what we're doing right now, or wait till September to see what the enrollment numbers like, to think what February could be like in twenty twenty-two is, is just as much of a guessing game anymore.
Yeah, for me, for one month of data, to just at least have an idea of what's happening there. I, I have a feeling the moment school opens within a few weeks, we're going to know how many kids are coming back that we may have lost and how many are. And I think the whole picture could look a ton different.
That's just, and that's assumption that that's a permanent change. That, that the change in the twenty-one, twenty-two enrollment is a permanent change. And I just don't know that I, I could assume that with that data.
One thing we can look at is I think, um, community education has, I think, the data on birth through five. I think Matt looks at that data. We could look at, you know, what is our population? Again, that's not a guarantee they're going to come here. But we could look at what is, what do the class sizes look like potentially coming in the next five years? Um.
My whole issue is you've taken a lot of people and educated them to a, a new method of giving their students the learning that they want. Whether they come back or not, we're looking at four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's quite a bit different in a budget our size. So I think it has a lot of merit to have an idea where we're at. Yep, it could be different, but I think the differences you're talking about, Thomas, are probably no different than we were going through over time anyway. When we hit this, we were doing great. Matt hired a new instructor because we were bulging at the seams a little bit. I mean, it can't get any better than that. If it looks like we're coming back to that, that could mean a different strategy moving forward than not. And I would assume maybe nothing happens in September. Maybe we're all still wearing masks and everybody's scared to death. I don't know. Um, but my assumption is as I read what's happening, I look at nursing home issues, I look at all that, we're starting to get on the other side of this thing, I believe. Which means that when the kids come back, we're going to have a lot of differences. Same is, we're doing a budget here because the state says we have to have it by July first. Well, we can't, we can't guess at that. Going back to taxpayers to, for one more month to see about where we're at, I don't think that that's unreasonable.
So you'd have to assume, uh, probably pretty steep, you know, increase or decline in student population to make a significant changes in what we're asking for operating referendum though. Um,
I was just going to ask.
I don't know how, uh, unless there's a drastic, you know, decline in student population that would cause us to need to make a significant decision in what we're, we're asking for operating referendum. I think we can probably look at the district as a whole and have a pretty good number on what we need, uh, what we need to ask for.
Well, man, for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of enrollment dollars coming from, from the state, does that make a difference on how much money we're looking at in operating levy?
I think that question was for me.
Yep, that was for you.
Yep, okay, um, the, I guess the, the answer is in the short term, yes. But in the long. But in the long term, not it, it doesn't become is as big of a factor into the equation. So when you're talking about for the short term and balancing a budget for next year, yes, that plays a huge role. But when you're talking about planning for the next ten years, I again, I I think there's going to end up being discussion about if the board's gonna move forward with a a recommendation for an operating referendum and what that dollar per pupil is. Yeah, it's probably gonna end up using our our current enrollment data that we have. But I think you're in for the backside that referendum. If the commitment is we're gonna put a ten-year referendum in place and we're gonna not go in after five years, say, oops, we miscalculated, we want to cancel it and put a new one in. Yeah, it becomes less of a of of an urgent urgent issue. But uh this is also the same question that our financial planner is asking me. So Matt, do you want me to use your pre-COVID enrollment numbers for your estimates? Or do you want me to use your COVID enrollment numbers? And I told him, I don't know. I I don't know which ones I want you to use. So they're running estimates with both of them. Um, and I I think at this point, I just would like board members, if you I'd like our April work session to really focus on operating referendum. And in the meantime, if you have specific questions that you feel really are core questions that we need to get um discussion going around and you need to see data about, I would like you just to get me those questions so I can get that stuff prepared for the April work session. To give you just a snippet of an idea, right now, our um thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents per pupil. If we wanted to just do an inflationary increase of ten years or eight years ago when that was enacted, what would that dollar amount be now? And then if we take that dollar amount and forecast it out ten more years, what do we need that dollar amount to be so that we can play this out? That we can save some money years one through five to be able to fund year six through ten? If you follow my kind of that the bell curve model. Right now, that thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents at a minimum, what we should go and ask our voters for is two hundred and eighty dollars per pupil. That's at a minimum. That's just looking at inflation. So to me, regardless of how many students we have, I think that that is one of the first places we need to start is what do we need things to look like just from an inflationary standpoint? And this is all information that I will bring to the April work session. And we can have more discussion on it and we can talk more about what the different perspectives are and how people view it and and how we want to move forward and and progress. But in the meantime, if there's specific student data, specific data that you feel is important to that conversation, please let me know and I'd be more than happy to put that together um as far as what if we have it um for the the April work session.
Matt, I have just a kind of a general question, and this is my first operating levy. So when you're figuring out that first number, is it really per student times that, you know, whatever amount you're going for? So we're taking our enrollment now? Or is it a, you know what I mean?
It's a weighted, yep, so it's weighted student counts. So like, for instance, right now, students in grade seven through twelve are wa- weighted at one point two per student. And then students in K through six are one point oh. So when you add that to our current current student count, when you wait our students, they end up, we end up just right around a thousand. And so you take thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents times a thousand and you get thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's right now what is on our um levy certification page as our voter-approved referendum. So if you would say, well, it shouldn't be thirty-nine when you factor inflation, it should be two two eighty. Now you're talking about rather than generating thirty-nine thousand dollars annually, now you're talking twenty-two hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually.
But it's based off of, it would be off of the year that we would go to vote.
Well, it's actually the previous year. It's the previous year. So you're using previous year data in order to for M D E to be able to run the actual referendum projections and um to develop the dollar amount that's needed per pupil to generate the funds that you're looking to generate.
So there there would be a, I mean, there's a shift between last year's data and this year's. So this year, we'd be going off of last year's. I mean, my biggest concern is regardless of our population, that amount has to increase. I mean, we're below our state average. We're one of the lowest amounts are amongst locally.
Yeah, so right now, the state average is about um uh the state average is about eight hundred dollars per pupil is where the state average is. And you know, even that midpoint or that halfway number between where we are and state average, I think Ellers gave me a run somewhere around like four hundred and twenty dollars per pupil. Um, but yeah, if you're talking about state averages, you're talking about about eight hundred dollars per pupil. Now you can go and split that state average and say, well, I just want to see what are the, what's the state average for schools with between seven hundred and fifty and twelve hundred and fifty students? And I mean, I could run that state number, state average number for you and and bring that type of stuff. So if there's specific data you really would like to consider and like to be able to get your hands on at the April work session, let me know and I will work with whether it's MSBA or Ellers or M D E. But I will work with whoever to be able to try and get those data points to you and be able to get um full information so we can have a full conversation about it.
All right. The recommendation superintendent to close the border education meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, Chapter thirteen D point zero three.
Nice move.
I have motion from Jake.
I'll second.
And a second from Cheryl. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Carry.
And can the notes just make sure we uh note that seven seventeen?
Seven, the meeting will be closed at seven seventeen P M.
Thank you.
Motion to open the meeting at seven thirty-three P M.
Almost.
Cheryl with the motion. And Rick with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. And the board of education, we close the meeting uh to discuss negotiation strategies and timeline. Oh, H, we can review upcoming meetings.
Um.
I'll just catch up here, Matt.
Go ahead, Thomas.
All right, so Wednesday, April seventh, the health insurance committee meeting.
Can I ask a question about that one?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question about that. You probably asked a question.
So I don't, I don't believe there's a board member that goes to that. Um, I I guess I put it on there just more so I reminded to tell the board members about this. We actually, our our bid opening uh came in uh on Friday was the deadline. Uh, so on Monday of this week, we had our um bids opened. We don't release numbers at the bid opening, but our insurance agent takes all the bids. Just uh indicates if they were a qualified bid or not, meaning did they submit all the um plans that we asked them to submit? And then he will take them back and April seventh is when we will find out exactly what our rates are. And um that health insurance committee will make a recommendation um to the district as far as which vendor we should move forward with. So I I do not believe there's a board member that attends that, but I want all board members to know that that will happen on April seventh.
And then uh April ninth, District Technology Committee meeting. The thirteenth, we have our work and learn session here in the boardroom. Uh, Friday, the twenty-third is a C meeting. And then the twenty-seventh, regular school board business meeting. Are we missing anything that anybody's knowledge? No. At that, we'll look
The board can now adjourn.
Motion from Jake. And I'll I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Carry.